Good evening, everyone. The time now is 6:32 on Tuesday, November 2nd. We'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Any comments, questions, additions, corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? All those in favor? I approve unanimously. Next up is warrants 24, 26, and 27. Any questions or comments on those? Can I have a motion?
I'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? I approve unanimously. Next up is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. Do we have any visitors? Let's see, anybody? It looks like it's all staff.
I'm here. I got nothing.
You got nothing, though? No comments?
No comment.
Okay. It's all staff, right? All right, then. Moving right along. Student representative report. Mr. Barron.
There will be coffee and conversation, which is an open meeting to staff, community, and students, on November 19th at 9:00 a.m. at a conference room in the high school. Grades are closing this week, so report cards will be out shortly. The alumni, every year in November during the last week before we go to Thanksgiving break, the alumni come back and they talk to the seniors and juniors about college experience so that the kids can learn about what college is like from a student perspective. Boys and girls are in state playoffs for soccer. The class of 2024 has a 50-50 raffle. Fundraisers are going on right now. The GMPA grab-and-go chicken dinner will be held on November 29th. It'll be out of East Meadow. There's a half-day Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday before Thanksgiving for the high The student of the month is being announced tomorrow, and the teacher of the month was Mrs. Ormano, formerly Miss Ingerham, recently married. We're going to do the Find the Ram again, which we did last month. So a little miniature ram was hidden in the school somewhere, and whoever found it got a prize. So that'll be returning soon. In November and December, there's going to be the 12 gifts for students at the high school. So there'll be 12 different rewards. So an example might be like free hot cocoa for everybody. Just an example, but more to come on that. Every Friday, the high school has been doing a themed dress-up day, so this Friday is tie-dye day. And so those will be continuing as well. There was a great turnout for Trunk or Treat and the middle school dance last week for Halloween. Granby to Go was granted, or was given, a $40,000 grant. So that's really positive. It'll help the community out a lot. More details with that if you, I don't know if Nancy wants to say anything about that. The high school, I guess, Granby schools will be pairing with the Dolly General for Toys for Tots again this year for the holiday season. And lastly, my class, the class of 2023, will be having a Chipotle fundraiser at the Hadley location on November 17th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We will get 33% of the profits directly to our class, and we cannot go there and advertise. So I'm going to be advertising now. We, flyer is posted on our Instagram. It's on the Good News Granby Facebook page, and we can, I'm going to try and get it into the Ram report for the next two weeks. And I'll say the code right now. So to get, for your, so only if you present the code will we get profits from the sale. So the code is E9NJ7PW. Again, E9NJ7PW.
So a question?
Sure.
If we use the app, is there a spot we can put that in?
I believe so. It said that there was.
Say the date again?
November 17th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Hadley location. Only the Hadley location. And that's all.
Do you have any more information on the 50-50 raffle that you said was going on right now?
I do not.
People wanting to buy tickets or whatever, how they would get them?
I do not. I would.
Form this out on the grant page or anything. I don't know how that.
I have not seen any. I've only heard that it is out. I would say, see if your kid is in the school, see one of the officers or their advisor is Ms. Mahoney. They could definitely go through them.
Marcus, you guys have flyers for that Chipotle benefit?
We will. They're not printed out yet, but we have a meeting this Thursday for publicity.
Canvas thing everywhere.
Yes. Everybody gets a flyer.
I have a flyer.
We handed them out at Trunk or Treat, and people seemed very excited. They go, "Ooh, Chipotle."
And you ran out of flyers pretty early on, right?
Yes. We were, by 5:00, we were almost out.
Any other questions for Marcus? Thank you so much. The next is the Granby educators representative, Cheryl, and she's unable to make the meeting tonight. And if it's all right with the committee, I'd like to do our new business first since we have Brittany here, our new A.D., so she doesn't have to sit through everything unless we'd like to. Is that all right with everyone? Brittany?
Hi.
Should I go through that?
Thank you.
You can sit right there.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Double mics. Put that down there. All right. Hi, everyone. All right. So for our fall season wrap-up, overall, the fall season has been fantastic. Our girls volleyball team and cross-country have had a great and successful season. We still have two teams in the state tournament, both our boys and girls soccer teams. Just announced actually a few hours ago, we have our boys playing home versus Boston International. It's this Saturday, November 6th, and the time is still to be determined. We're still waiting for the girls soccer bracket to be published at this time. I kind of wanted to just touch upon transportation. So we have seen a few bumps this fall season when it comes to this topic. I wanted to share that our bus company does provide services for other districts as well, not just Granby. So the drivers, they do have many routes per day to complete before picking up our student athletes for sporting events. So however, we do anticipate a better outcome this upcoming winter season. The later start times of our sporting events will help benefit the drivers who have more than one route before bringing our student athletes to their destinations. For the winter season and what to look for, which we're pretty excited about, we're going to open our season following all proper protocols. The season will begin starting November 29th. All coaching positions are now filled or in the process of being finalized. And the sign-ups for all sports are to be done through Family ID, which can be accessed through our athletics page, which is now open. And I know the question about sport banquets has been arising a lot. There is going to be one held at some point in May for all sports teams. For communication, if anyone ever needs to contact me, my information is available on our high school website under athletics. And I do work at a different district during the day, so I know for general questions for your school day, Jackie is available to answer any questions, whose information is also provided on our school website. For all sports schedules, you'll find them on ArbiterLive.com. And.
Is that on the website, too?
On our school website?
Yeah.
I don't think so, no. We could add it. Oh, is it? Okay. Then yes, it is. And then lastly, I just want to take time to personally thank Peter Gay for providing lights for the girls soccer team for their senior night. It was an electrifying night that everyone still talks about. So thank you again, Peter. I also want to thank the Booster Club for all that they do and having huge success with our snack shack this fall season and all the amazing work they did to help honor our seniors during each senior night. And I also want to take the time to thank Ally, Jackie, and our trainer, John, who have also been a huge help to make our fall season a success thus far. That's all I got. Thank you.
So I do have a question.
Sure.
About the bus thing. So I understand it'll be more regulated for winter with it being later, but spring's not that far off. And if it was a problem in the fall, you can see it potentially being a problem in the spring. So in the past, we didn't have as many pickups. Is part of it, do you think, the shortage of bus drivers due to the pandemic?
Absolutely. I do.
So when you reserve a bus, like what, it's, how does that work? You put in a thing that says the bus was for 2:30 or something to go here and there or whatever?
Yes.
And then they just didn't show? Was there any kind of?
That could be, it could be the issue. There are other times where the bus driver has so many routes that at times they did just forget. But Jackie does a great job during the day communicating with that. There are times where they have a cancellation, so then the bus is able to come back and pick up our students. So it does relate with the shortage of everything. Jackie, I know you would have probably better answers on the bus, but the communication is there with us and the bus company.
I'm glad to know that Jackie then is the point of contact, because I did hear personally from a bunch of people that were frustrated about, you know, because there was a downstream effect. If the buses weren't on time, parents were showing up, taking time off from work, getting to a game that was actually pushed back by an hour, so they wouldn't have had to take time off from work. So there's, you know, the downstream effect of that.
Right.
So if it can just be more, I don't know, visibly posted or clarified, like that Jackie is the point of contact for those kinds of things?
Yes.
That if there is, you know, some kind of a concern or whatever, that it can be kind of flowed through.
I would say, so Jackie would be the point of contact for the bus company, and then it should flow through the coaches to the athletes as well. So that communication should be coming in multiple forms. I also think, and Brittany didn't mention it, but I do think our change in leagues and our schedule has had an impact, too. We're playing more games up in the Berkshires and further distances, which has meant that our pickups have been earlier, which has caused part of the problem. So those games, when we were able to, we're able to be backed up. And I also know this is something other districts are seeing as well. One district in particular, I've heard quite a bit about, has had a number of games canceled, and it seems to be consistently on Fridays, and it seems to be consistently happening like later in the day. So.
And the season starts for winter sports when?
November 29th. Yep.
All right. Any questions for Brittany?
Do we know yet what winter sports we're going, we're offering for sure? Like what sign-ups are for?
For individual sports, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes. So we have basketball. We have wrestling, swimming, which is a co-op. Holyoke is the host for that. And then we have, what's the last one? Swimming. Did I say swimming?
Hockey.
Hockey. Thank you. Hockey.
So we're co-upping for hockey?
Co-upping for hockey and swimming as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Swimming is a triple co-op now. It's Holyoke, South Hadley, and Granby.
Yep. Yep. And wrestling, too, which is South Hadley and Pioneer Chinese Emergent with us.
And they're coming here?
Yes. We host. Yes. Correct.
And then the, I guess the last question is just where do we stand or do we think we stand for winter games?
Regular season right now.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
Good.
Any other questions? Awesome.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Enjoy the rest of your night.
You, too.
And let us know when you hear about the girls.
Yes, I will.
I'm so excited.
I'm hoping tonight or tomorrow.
We have a big boys' game here. That's awesome.
All right. So now we're going to backtrack and go to continuing business. First up is the testing program.
So yeah, testing program. I think last week was our fourth week of pool testing. We'll run pool testing again this week. And we do have a program coordinator in place now. We also have a CNA who is working to support our staff. So I know Nancy is working to gradually release some of that, which was the plan really from the get-go. But as we've reported throughout, that we felt it was important to get it up and running, so we were able to do it on a smaller scale. We hope to grow that over the next few weeks as they acquaint themselves with our systems and our school and our students and staff. But program coordinator, we saw her last week for the first time, and she was in yesterday. So she'll be in, we're expecting Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. And we're also conducting some test-ins days, which would be for students who may have been in close contact but were asymptomatic, and we're testing them daily for seven days. So.
Is the test-ins day for vaccinated students as well?
Vaccinated students are not required to participate in test-ins day.
I think we should still keep this as an item going forward on continuing business.
Sure. Of course.
Next is the mask mandate update.
So the commissioner announced that he was extending the mask mandate through January 15th of 2022 at this time. So that's, the requirements are still the same. If we got to 80% of a building that was fully vaccinated, staff were there, we're about 90% of students. Last week's report was still about 12 to 15 was, I believe, 50, 55%, and 16 to 19 was about 63%. So we're still a ways off in the student categories.
But it wouldn't, because the Granby mask mandate is still in place?
Correct. So that would supersede it because it's closest in proximity.
On that note, though, can I just ask a clarifying? If towns do change their policies, just to reiterate, though, the state, Desi, is still continuing masking through January 15th?
Correct.
So it doesn't matter if the town lifts a mandate, we're still going to be masking through to January 15th?
Unless we hit that 80% threshold, which means we have to submit an application to the state that has to get approved.
Right.
So you all would obviously be part of that conversation.
Okay.
But generally, yes. The answer would be yes, as long as, even if, even if Granby lifted it in the schools, based on the state regulations, we would have to be masked in schools.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's been really confusing for certain people. They're seeing things lifting and thinking it trickles, but we're still under that, Desi guys.
Yeah. We heard some of that yesterday. I know a couple of local communities lifted yesterday, so there's some questions.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions on the masks? All right. Is Nancy on later at all or no? Is there anything about, it's not testing on the masks, but I was curious about any vaccine clinics that were coming up?
I have that in my superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we're going to get into our work group meetings for the subcommittees. So we have Budget and Finance and Evaluation and Goal Committee. It's about 10 of 7. It's 6:51. Do we want to go until about 7:30 for 40 minutes or 7:45 and do almost an hour? What do you guys think? Because then we just have a small amount for standing reports at the end. Everyone's doing that?
It depends on, maybe 7:45, but if we're done earlier, is that okay?
Yeah. Adam, do you want to stay in here for Budget and Finance?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So we'll break until, what did we say? 7:45?
45.
7:45? And if you guys finish earlier, just come back in and we'll.
How about if you finish earlier? You can come and stop us, because I think ours is just going to be more of a.
Okay. That works. Continue. You guys are just going to be in the hall? All right. 7:47. We did pretty good coming back to our stuff. Of course, budget committee went a little long. Why don't you guys go ahead first and fill us in on what you decide or discuss?
I'm so fast spoken. Go right ahead. Okay. So with the Evaluation and Goal Committee, we've talked about just trying to get a better understanding of the evaluation process, seeing if there was a certain type of template that's used, just to kind of break down the process a little bit more clearly. And, you know, reaching out to Tracy as a resource in that, in seeing if she had any other guidance on that. And also in terms of just kind of the timeline of things, like when to expect potential, like evidence to kind of start to be submitted, what that might look like or how, like the logistics around that, I guess. And so that's what we're trying to kind of wrap our heads around now. And then hopefully with Tracy brought into the loop, that'll help us, you know, just get a clearer picture on all of it.
Excellent. Anything else? Any questions?
I think one thing we realized when we were talking out there is there's a lot of layers to what we started the conversation at. So I think I said to them, too, sometimes I think right now our current reality is we might feel like some things are being done backwards, and I think that's an okay place to be because we're taking steps in the right direction. And it's just not an established process right now. So I think the fact that we created the subcommittee and we're meeting and having these conversations is a step in a really positive direction.
All right. Budget and Finance, Jen, go ahead and report out, or Adam?
Sure.
Or both?
Yeah. So we spent some time looking at the calendar, and as I've mentioned plenty of times, it's a fluid document, so those dates are going to change. What we did was kind of look through the month of December and try to get some dates pretty concrete there that will then kind of let the rest of the calendar fall into place. So Jen also reached out to Tracy to try to get her here for the MASC budget presentation. I prefer that that be like really the first step in this process and kind of having her come, inviting the public, inviting select board, finance committee, any town committee, and kind of having her come here, do the presentation, give everybody in the community an overview on how budgets in Massachusetts are developed, how school districts are funded. And that'll be a really good segue into the rest of our budget process and budget season. So hopefully, the end of November, beginning of December will work for Tracy. At the same time, we're hoping to hear back from Glenn about a good date and time that will work for select board, for us and select board to get together and talk about the process for FY '23. So those are two things that we focus on for the calendar that will, again, hopefully let the rest of the calendar fall into place. The next topic we talked about was school committee goals and must-have slash non-negotiables for the budget in FY '23. And that's an ongoing conversation, but I would like to have some, a few hard goals in place over the next month, so it kind of gives Stephen and I and the rest of the administration some guidance on where we want to go with the budget process this year. So I don't know if we want to get into too much of the conversation right now, but if you guys do have any specifics, either goals, again, non-negotiables that, you know, we need to see in the budget this year, they might not have been in there in other years, but we need to see them this year, certainly email them to me or email them to Jen. She can maybe compile a list of everybody's and then send it to me. But I, we really want to focus on the school committee's input this year. Not that we haven't in past years, but I feel like, again, separate from last year, we haven't done a really good job of building this budget together. It's kind of been a school department, present to the school committee, hopefully you guys agree to our budget. All right, we're going to, we're going to move forward with it. But I want this, obviously, to be a collaborative process, so we'd really love your guys' input this year, again, for guidance for us, and it's, we can always go back to it and say, okay, this was a goal. We didn't reach it. How come? How can we reach it in the future? How come we didn't reach it? And, you know, what's the, what are the outcomes because we didn't reach that goal? So if you guys can put together a list, you want to filter it through Jen or send them right to me, I am good for whatever you guys want to do.
One thing as you were sharing it all, but it's okay time to throw in that we had talked about with Tracy coming. We had kind of mentioned at one point, too, Stephen, I think I was chatting with you whether or not. And I think it's great to have Tracy now, I do, but then at the same time, it's not really hot budget season. Are we going to have people participating versus, you know, do we want to have Tracy closer to when everyone's starting to really think about budget more in the spring? Do we want to have our second time? Like, you know what I mean? I'm just hoping which way can we garner the most attendance so that people are hearing the message.
I think, I understand what you're saying. I think, however, at least our goal this year is to be to communicate more with the entire school community earlier and more often. So I think having Tracy come in the beginning and kind of lay that groundwork for us, and then we can kind of piggyback off of that and say, okay, you know, you guys heard it from someone different from us. Here's the process. Here's, here's what we're working with. I think it would be good for her to come in the beginning, and like I said, we can follow that and really get the message out there based on, you know, the knowledge that Tracy gave to the rest of the community, is my personal opinion. But I do also see, she comes in November, December, now we're not going to town meeting for another four months, so did people lose some information? Were they not engaged because it's so early in the process? I understand. I would just say my personal opinion would be I'd like her in the beginning, and we can build off of, off of that.
So we have a schedule of public forums. If she's here in the beginning, then I mean, go through the process. When people come to those public forums before we present, I'm saying what? They'll have an understanding so that as we're going through it multiple times, they'll have a better understanding of how we came up with the budget and why the budget has been so done.
And the other thing, we were talking about, when we have Tracy come, if it's all right with her, we'll record it and index it and, you know, have it out on our website or on Good News Granby or wherever it needs to live, and as many places as it needs to live, YouTube, whatever.
Right. And then refresh that.
Right. Yeah. We can link that, like add that to. We can link it to our, you know, to our minutes, our agendas. It can be, you know. But I tend to agree with Adam that I think I want it to be at the beginning so that we can, then it's not a question as to how we started our process. Like this, this is really what the guidelines are, because I don't think we've ever been necessarily doing it wrong, but I think people have the perception that we're doing it wrong. So if someone from the outside comes and says, this is how you build the budget, this is where those numbers come from, this is how the formula works, as we're going through, we can refer back to, you know, when we present it in February and we present it in March and we present it in April, we sort of have those building blocks that we can say, all right, you know, as, you know, Tracy mentioned back in November or early December, you know, this is how this is, this is where this number is derived from.
And I think we can also, to your point, Audrey, invite her back at some point. And if we said in April she's coming back and those questions are being asked, that, well, how did you do that? And she's affirming the work that we've done, I think there is value in that, too. So that might be a conversation that we have with her as well, and what happens between December and March might dictate some of that as well.
I'm just hoping we get people to come regardless. Like, I don't know that it matters the time of year or something.
I agree. And even the last time, there was one, though. I mean, it was very limited attendance, and you had the opportunity to ask questions, which I thought was great, you know, too. So I'm really hoping that people go to it. I remember it being the same night of a select board meeting, so there was a couple people that had to run back and forth, which was.
It was also graduation week.
Yeah. So hopefully, we can plan it better this time.
I would also say this, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We're not going to fix this in one year, right? This is. This is a, this is a, and I'm not saying you're implying, I'm just saying, this is a three to five-year realistic process. Awesome if we get to town meeting in May and our process was, worked perfectly, but we could find out next year, hey, Tracy in November probably wasn't a good idea, or a public forum in February might not have been a good idea. There's gonna be some learning curves to this, and I think realistically, in three years, hopefully we have the, the process ironed out, but we're gonna have some, you know, we're probably gonna make some decisions this year in this process that might work against us. Some might work out great, some might work out against us, and next year we're gonna be able to hopefully look back and say, okay, let's try things a little differently than we did it last year.
Yeah, and I think Tracy is a great resource, and we should use her as such. Ultimately, the town's gonna look at the seven of us, right? To be answering the questions, to have the answers, to understand what the cuts that might need to be made, or why we're proposing something new. Ultimately, it's gonna be the seven of us at this table that are gonna be asked to answer those questions. And, right, from that perspective, I think Tracy can give the greatest presentation that, and we all love it, but it's gonna come back to us. So I think having her lay a foundation, affirming the work that we're doing is important for us as it is the community. But I think the fact that we're having these conversations, budget and finance, that individual school committee members are welcome to come in and meet with Adam and I throughout the process, things like that, so that we're all feeling confident about the work that we're doing, the steps that we're taking.
Any other budget questions? Budget and finance questions? All righty then, that's superintendent's report.
Okay, so announced at our last meeting that we had got moved to the next phase of the building process for Granby Junior Senior High School with the MSBA, we had a meeting this morning. I think the meeting went really well. We have a walkthrough scheduled for this Thursday. It was Adam, Jen, Ally, John Sullivan, and Chris Martin on the call today. I think from both sides, the school and the town, like I said last time, we were excited to collaborate. I think, you know, the town was able to answer the questions that the schools weren't, and we worked really well together. So really long process, but a good initial first step, I would say. We're excited to announce that we're offering another vaccination clinic with the approval of the vaccine for students, children ages five and up. We'll be offering the clinic on campus November twelfth, Friday, November twelfth. And let me just make sure I'm giving you the right times, I believe it's ten thirty, ten AM to six PM. So Nancy's working on some information to get out to families about that, but excited to have that opportunity and encouraging people to take advantage. It will not just be for those students, any, anybody who is not vaccinated, or we anticipate boosters being available at that clinic as well. So we're, we will, once again, offer that on campus. There should be a couple other opportunities. I know the Board of Health talked about partnering with North Hampton and McDuffie, but I think McDuffie's was already full, but some other opportunities in town should be coming as well. Sure.
Do you know which one that they have at this point or not yet?
It's only Pfizer that's been approved, so they'll have the Pfizer for ages five and up, but typically they'll have Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna for the other ages that they've been approved for. But when we get that letter out, we'll make sure that it has all that information in it. If people haven't seen it, we did put out our first edition of the October newsletter. I think our initial reaction is we're happy that we got it out, but we're already talking about tweaking it a little bit. We want to have some more, some more, I think, having the text be more focused a little bit, and more pictures, less narrative if we can, and there's gonna be some opportunities to have that, but we're certainly open to feedback. We, we sent it out via Blackboard to all of our families and staff. We, Kathy Leonard agreed to send it out through her contact list at the town, and we dropped it off, I'm gonna miss one, but I'm gonna try, we dropped it off at, I should just go down two oh two, Sapowskis? No, Sapowskis was closed. So we turned Dickinson's, Early Mug, um, the library, Class Grass, Dressels, Council on Aging, and Granby Green. So we dropped all those.
No, is it Palace? Gumbel Barn? The bank? The post office?
No, not every, not everywhere. We, we picked seven places for our first time through, for our first time, we picked seven places and dropped off copies. They were all great and happy to have it there, and it'll come out every month, so we'll get it to more and more places. Student, parent, and staff survey went out last night. I sent it via Blackboard, we're gonna get that out to students. It will be open until November thirtieth. It is an anonymous survey. As I said in the text, really, it's part of the entry plan, as much as I've been talking to people in one-to-one meetings and small group meetings, I want to make sure that we're, I'm trying to get, give everybody an opportunity to give their thoughts on how the schools operate, what their desires are for the schools and things like that. So this survey is just another mechanism to do that. And then before we sign off, I just want to acknowledge how hard our staff is working. I think as I talk to other superintendents, as I talk to staff, I know how stressful teachers' jobs and educators' jobs are right now. The gaps in student learning are as big as they've ever been. We're seeing challenges, I would say especially at the elementary level, that maybe we haven't seen before. Students in first grade who have never been in school before, you know, typically it's that first few weeks that we set expectations and set routines, and some of those expectations and routines just aren't working. So we're working really hard to figure out ways to support staff and support students. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't think it's one answer that's gonna fix it. It's not the flick of a switch, it's gonna take creative thinking and I think a collaborative approach between admin and teachers and students and the community to address some of those concerns. So, you know, wanted to acknowledge that and certainly appreciate all the work that the staff has been putting in the first two months plus of the school year, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
Any questions or anything?
I just have a quick question about the survey. I know it was emailed out, you said, are students filling that out at home or at school?
The plan for East Meadow and the Junior Senior High School is that they'll have some time during school. East Meadow, we're trying to plan specific time, so it hasn't even been sent to those students specifically, but they should be receiving it in their own email in the next week or so. So we're just trying to work with staff here to see, is it gonna be done in their media class? Is it, how is it gonna be done?
Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure if that was something, like I said, that we are supposed to be doing that at home or at school?
Yeah.
But, all right.
If anything changes, I'll let you know. But as of today, we had one hundred and fourteen responses, and they've been all from parents and staff, so students ones should be coming.
Awesome, thank you.
Of course.
Anything else? Questions? All right, Adam?
Um, the district, I had mentioned this last meeting, the district was awarded the rural school aid revenue, so we did receive that revenue, and between me, Stephen, and the leadership team, we're gonna come up with a plan on how we're gonna spend that twenty-four thousand one sixty-eight. We received that last week, so again, we're gonna meet and come up with a plan on how we'll, we'll spend that money. There is a reporting requirement, there's a survey that we need to complete by February that will kind of help us, help guide us in how we're gonna spend that money. The district was also awarded a, an emergency connectivity fund grant. We worked, David and I worked with our E-Rate consultant, we were awarded just over ninety-eight thousand dollars, which will help us purchase new one-to-one devices at East Meadow. So, like I said, Dave and I have been working with the E-Rate consultant, we will continue to work with him, and the plan right now is to purchase these devices sometime in the spring, and hopefully have it fully implemented for next school year. So that's a very, very good.
Some questions already?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The one-to-one devices you said for East Meadow?
Yes.
Do they follow the students when they go over to the high school?
Um, so, and David, you can speak to this if you want, there's some very specific guidelines that we have to follow since we were awarded this funding. They, these probably will not follow the students to the high school, however, the students do need access to these devices, so they can bring them home on certain occasions, but David can speak a little more to those details.
So the devices that were purchased were age-appropriate, so for example, the devices that are being purchased with this grant money for kindergarten students will be touchscreen devices. So those devices will need to be reserved for those younger children, if you let those devices follow them up, then the next group of young kids won't have that functionality. And as Adam, you know, the details on this are still a little bit gray as to what our obligations are moving forward, you know, are we allowed to move devices between buildings? Or does it have to stay in the building that it was intended for? We had to, before applying for the grant, we had to go through our records and look at, you know, the percentage of students who were taking devices home last year for each grade level, because some students and their parents preferred to have them use a household device as opposed to a school Chromebook. They were in a minority, but we had to document all that. And the devices that we purchased, or will be purchasing with this grant money, have to be dedicated to students who were using our devices last year for remote learning. You could not purchase spares, you could, it was very particular and specific, so obviously we're gonna use the money in the most flexible way that we can, but we have to make sure we follow all the rules. So, right now it looks like the devices will have to stay in this building, okay? And the devices that we currently have in this building, believe it or not, you know, we think of this as a new building, but Chromebooks typically, when you buy them brand-new, are good for like three, four, or five years. The devices that we have in this building will be expiring this summer. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean they're gonna suddenly stop working, but they will no longer be eligible for updates and upgrades, and some of the newer tools coming down the road for teachers will not work on them. So the timing of this is very good for us, it's gonna save us a lot of money and so on and so forth, okay?
That was a, my second question is, you know, when you get something like this, is whether it starts with a certain group of kids and then travels kind of with them, by the time they get to a certain degree, those devices kind of null and void anyway, and then it shifts off to the next building, so that each way, that travels with them, it's their device, but every year, like it's their stuff.
Correct, and, and when you, and like at the high school level, it's very possible that down the road, there might be some, something in the curriculum that might require a different type of device for high school kids. For example, a student taking a computer science class is gonna need a device that's very different than what a third grader's gonna be using. So the third grade device may not work over there. So, so I've learned from all these years that things change, and I might say change faster than we expect them to change. I might be coming back to in the spring saying, hey, great, we got this grant for a computer science class, we're gonna buy all this equipment for it, and, you know, I'm sure people are gonna say that's great, but you're gonna find out that that equipment is gonna be specific for that class and that content area, might not serve kids in this building too well, but is necessary over there and vice versa.
I do love to touch these keys too, because my daughter had that last year, it was so helpful when they were doing certain things, that she could just touch her, because my older daughter didn't, I'm a good teacher.
So once we get some more details and kind of have a, you know, more guidance from, for this, and we have a rollout plan, we'll.
And the reason we're, and, and, and the reason we're gonna, we're, we're holding off a little bit on purchasing them is because once they walk, come in the door, the clock starts ticking on the warranty. So if you know that you're not gonna need something until September, next September, you wouldn't want to buy it now. However, the vendor we've been working with is projecting that in, you know, four or so months, inventories might start dwindling as schools start exercising this grant money. So she's gonna give me a heads up as that window gets a little bit uncomfortable, and we might have to pull the trigger. So, so ideally, we'd like to, you know, put a purchase order in like in May, you know, and have these devices here in June and July and say, whoo, we got them for next September, but it might have to be in the winter, or the late winter, if inventories start dwindling.
And even with everything shipping, you're taking so long?
Yeah, there's, there's a few unknowns, yeah.
Yep, yep.
It's better to be ahead of it on that simple too.
Any more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our ESER three grant application, that's the, as the title says, the third round of ESER funds, we were awarded just over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's where we were funding the hopefully updated kitchen and cafeteria repairs. That application was submitted to the state, however, it is on hold at the state level because the state is awaiting further guidance on how to move forward with applications that include construction projects in them, so of course, our application is one of those. So it's submitted, and again, the, the communication I got from the state is that they're waiting on further guidance on how to proceed with those applications. So unfortunately, it's tied up at this point, but there's really nothing we can do. So I'm gonna give you guys an update as soon as I know more, I will obviously update, update you guys.
I think you got a question? And this update is based on COVID-related, because we can't use it due to the COVID-related guidance.
Yeah, so ventilation, yes, the kitchen and cafeteria, the updates are, you know, we found through the pandemic that there was just insufficient ventilation, air circulation in the kitchen and cafeteria areas, so we put in for upgrades on that grant. Uh, the East Meadow repairs that were due to the lightning strike, that is now about four or five months ago, which is crazy, we're hopefully near the end. I will say a big thanks to David and John, they've been working pretty tirelessly with vendors to try to get this figured out. As of this afternoon, we have nine out of the eleven cameras that have been down, they are now up and running. However, they're still working on getting the feed for those cameras to multiple TV screens to work. There are still some parts that we need that David and John, again, are working with the vendors to get, but it looks like we should have this hopefully wrapped up within the next week or two. It's been a very long process, there's been a lot of moving parts, but hopefully this will be wrapped up and we should be back to normal shortly. Questions on that? Okay. Lastly, I did receive the quarterly expense report from Chris yesterday, so I will be reconciling the first quarter of this year, and I'll report out in the December meeting for the first quarter. Just quickly, David, I don't want to mean to put you on the spot, and you don't have to, if there's nothing, but anything regarding the East Meadow project? I know we're, we're missing parts, we're waiting on parts, you're working with the vendor, but we're, we're in pretty good shape compared to where we were.
Yeah, a lot of progress has been made. What, what essentially happened is that there was so much damage done by the light.
Thank you, Alex, I'm sorry. We, as Adam had indicated, a lot of progress has been made, but because of the nature of what had happened, parts and digital devices that are the responsibility of different vendors who supply them and support them broke. So some things identified as broken, it gets replaced, and then we noticed that the, the data is still not flowing, and we find out that something else was broken. We, we didn't see it immediately, but we saw it after the first part was fixed. Today, they were here and they found out that a, a network card on one of the systems specific to the cameras had failed, but that was just discovered today. And they're not sure if. not sure if that part can be, is available anymore, or if we're gonna have to get a whole new system, when I say a whole new system, the box that the card sits in. So that, we learned this afternoon, um, before the end of the workday, so hopefully the next day or two we'll have, either way, it's gonna get fixed, and we're gonna get what we need, but, um, you know, as Adam indicated, there's a lot of players here, and it wasn't just one thing that broke, um, it's almost like a car that's been involved in a, in a bad accident, and it's gotta go to the body shop, then it's gotta go to the mechanic to get parts in the engine replaced, and then it's gotta go to the tire place, get new tires, and, and then when they're putting a tire on, they discover something else that wasn't discovered earlier that's broken, I guess that'd probably be the best analogy.
Good? Okay, thank you. Thanks, David.
Joe?
We don't meet until November seventeenth.
I'm still gonna ask you every...
Same answer.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, I just kinda go through. Um, anything else to follow up on? The only thing that I have for our agenda next time is, from continuing business, is the testing program and the mask mandate update, um, do you guys have anything that I missed to make sure is on the agenda for next time?
We'll do the enrollment dashboard as well, and we'll report out on MCAS.
School capacity is, uh, committee is meeting tomorrow, so if I are next meeting, I would have some sort of update.
Excellent.
Alright, our next meeting is two weeks from today, right? Which is what, oh, sixteenth?
The day before Chaplain.
Get Marcus back.
Big day. To remind us again, um, if that is everything, I will, would love to hear a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All second.
All those in favor?